We're now at the section of the Agenda for Public Discussion and Comments on Agenda Items. Please refer to the regulations regarding discussion and comments that is supposed to be signed up. We have one person signed up, and that is Ms. Malarki.
Fourteen and a half years ago, I was asked to be part of the facility steering committee that was given the task of coming through the plan with the primary calls of the power of Congress and to enhance the learning spaces throughout the district. I was excited when I learned what this vision would be accomplished. During these past months, I have witnessed and have had time to report to attest to the time and the effort done by the consulting firms and by the committee involved in this project. They have worked diligently.
You will learn tonight with an in-depth presentation of their commitment, of their dedication, and of their belief in this project. Being the elected official of the Tower of New Windsor, I was drawn to the two schools in my town that I knew had unusual structural problems. The tower in New Windsor School was finally closed a few years ago. The current design scheme proposed that the over 100-year relic be taken down, it will be demolished. At Valesgate School, the portable classrooms, a temporary solution that has lasted well beyond two years for life, will be gone. A workable solution with new classrooms will be put in their place. New Windsor School and Valesgate School, parents are going to rejoice and to be cheering at these options. Always in processing, the intel given to the committee at each meeting, the whole committee has never lost sight of the fiscal impact that this bond will have on our taxpayers. Our commitment to enhance the learning spaces throughout the district has always come with a question: at what cost to our taxpayers? Newburgh has every right to be proud of its school district. The academic excellence coming out of our schools and the accomplishments of our educators on both the state and federal level are shining examples of the dedication we have for our scholars. Now is not the time to stop doing what this district does best. Now is the right time for all of us to get behind this bond. The board members, the administration, the staff, the teachers, and the parents must focus on the passing of this bond. And one more thing before I leave, I beg to offer a suggestion for the 2019-20020 District Banter: always forward. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the Board on Agenda Items? If not, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to our superintendent, Dr. Badia.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask that we just move some things around under my section, given the fact that a community member just commented on 3.2. Perhaps that's a good transition into that presentation. So I know I might be throwing the order off a little bit, but if you could put up the Capitol bomb. So this evening, several members of the steering committee are going to highlight for the Board of Education and for our community the tremendous work that has taken place over the last, the better part of two years. I would say this was a true team. This was a team that put ideas on the table, pushed the boundaries a little bit. We didn't always agree with one another, but we always kept in the middle of our thinking and planning what was really at stake. And that was, how do we improve the facilities in our district so that way our staff and scholars could greatly benefit? And so tonight, what you're going to observe is the final concepts, again, over the last two years' worth of work. And I'm proud to be able to present this work and engage the Board of Education in a conversation about the status as we recommend it moving forward. And so with that, Roger, you have the clicker? All right, so can you just do me a favor, just click to the next few slides, and then I'll turn it over to you. So here's a sampling of many of the participants on this team. As you can see, we have a wide range of stakeholders with an investment in the Newburgh community. And I have to just publicly express my appreciation and thanks to everyone who gave up their time, and it was pretty significant. Thank you for your time, thank you for your ideas, thank you for constantly pushing one another to make sure we were coming to the Board of Education and the community with concepts that we feel the community can get behind. Next slide. All right, Roger, you want to start?
Thank you, Dr. Badia. I concur, pardon me, I concur with your statements in that with respect to the team, the team together, it's been nothing short of rigorous and thorough in our evaluation of our school district facilities and in-depth emphasis on minimizing the tax impact on the community. So thank you. I'm joined here this evening, Mr. Chris Colby and Lauren Corzio from Bar Patterson Lee. You had the pleasure of listening to Ms. Pat Malarki, Ms. Lou Rodriguez, who's construction management and contributed towards the budgeting in our process, and Ms. Beth Ferguson, who was tireless in her calculations of the tax impact for each of the scenarios that we went through. So before we begin, I'd like to go over, revisit the, revisit the schedule, the three referendum project schedule. Final scope with the facilities we have before us this evening, and that's been vetted over and over again. Some time ago, Dr. Badia, it solicited the consensus of the Board amidst a number of different presentations. That enabled us to establish a lead agency with the State Quality Environmental Review, which is the first step in the process. At this, the environmental process continued, and I am happy to say that it received a negative declaration. And what that means is that there, for all of the work that you will see this evening is planned for the district, that there are no adverse environmental impacts that will affect it. So that opens up the door for us to move further. We believe this evening, the Board of Education will adopt that resolution, accepting the secret results, and it will open us with a couple of additional procedures, but nothing that, nothing that would hamper us from moving forward. And we anticipate a vote. We'll talk more about that schedule toward the, toward the end of the presentation. So the significant core of a project is our Career and Tech Education Program. As many of you know, we are not a blow sees component, so 100% of our vocational programs are administered within our school facilities, predominantly NFA main. And that's happened for decades. Over time, those programs have expanded. The student population that's participating in here is approximately, actually, it's over 2,600. And the individual programs, highlighted here, we now have 19 active programs, and there are another six or seven slated and planned, and probably would have been underway had it not been for the fact that we did not have the space to accommodate it. So looking at, looking at the space needs of the program, the fact that the equipment and the technology is not up to par, the committee had found that it was, that it's viable for us to build the Career and Tech Education Program its own facility. What's planned is approximately 130,000 square feet, and the way that one would receive this is, there are two, two different sets of curriculums, there's industrial arts and technical arts, highlighted by color. Here we have the technical arts, excuse me, the industrial arts, which is your HVAC, your automotive technology, cosmetology, welding, those that require logistical movement of materials that's based on the first floor. The other wing is the technical arts, which is comprised of holistic medicine, the emergency management, and many of the other Career and Tech programs. On the second floor, the entire floor will be devoted to what the technical arts and be able to fully facilitate the entire program and allow for expansion. The site plan consists of, for those of you that aren't familiar, here is West Street and here's Ginni Avenue. Right now, there's a baseball and a soccer field there. That will be relocated to this area, just south of there, and the facility will be built at that point. There will also be a connecting hallway from the existing NFA main to the CTE facility so that students and teachers will not be exposed to the elements. Here are some of the, of the more realistic renditions. You can see here, you have students' common space, an aesthetic, main entrance, gymnasium. The plan calls for a tremendous amount of natural light, which enhances academic learning. The curriculum, excuse me, the culinary program is strategically located next to the cafeteria, so those students can serve meals, prepare and serve meals. Now, the way that, to understand these slides that we're about to go through, by the way, each of the board members and the senior administration have a copy of the slide presentation in front of them for reference, right? And you also have some writing tablets in lieu of dotting down any notes or anything that you want us to further emphasize moving forward. The name of the school is here and below, and the floor, the floor plan is just below it for identification purposes. What we're focused on, what we're focused on here predominantly is Proposition 1. We have two propositions that the committee have decided on. Proposition 1 consists of three things: new construction, renovations, and building condition survey items. Proposition 2, holistically, is a plan to install indoor air quality, ventilation, and air conditioning systems in all 14 of our schools, well, what will be 15 of our schools if the plan is successful. Within that, we have, on NFA main's lower level, we have renovation, the gymnasium will be renovated, as well as the spaces that the CTE program occupied will also be renovated. When I talk about renovation, it's a complete threat, removal of the existing building materials and replacement with new from floor to ceiling. Cosmetology, the Eagles Nest study, renovation of the existing auto body class, right? Each of the classrooms will get, once renovated, will be furnished with new furniture, and all of the spaces will be painted. At the main, main level, the pool area will be renovated. This space here, we, what we've counted in the research is a number of spaces where undersized classrooms have continued, continue to be used. What we're planning, what we, what we're obligated to do there as a district is to make those the appropriate size in terms of square footage. So many of those smaller classrooms will be consolidated into larger ones to be into compliance. The culinary. The existing TV studio, we renovated into a virtual reality laboratory, and the planetarium will also be renovated. On the upper level, this entire area here is the original 1927 building, and if you were to walk through it, you will get that same feel because it's, there has not been any renovations in that space. So that will be completely renovated into approximately 50,000 square feet of space. Again, all of the old building materials removed from floor to ceiling and replaced. NFA North Campus, for identity purposes, I talked about the three things that are involved in Proposition 1: new construction, renovation, and VCS items. And those are identified in these drawings, in these photographs, and the areas that they're pointing to for free roam knowledge and reference. All locker rooms at NFA main lower level will be renovated, the stairs, the outside stairs and handrails will be replaced. On the main level, kiln will be relocated, the railing on the steps are, will be replaced with better materials, more safe. The, one look at the electrical panels dictate the era and the fact that they all need to be replaced as well. From a renovation perspective, each of the darkened areas here, which is your classrooms, your district media center, they will all be renovated as well. On the upper level, on the roof, we have air handling units that need to be replaced. Here it calls for duct installation to be repaired, but quite frankly, the ductwork needs to be replaced also. The front steps, the base behind the front steps is deteriorated, so this needs to be repaired, will be repaired. Vinyl floor tile throughout the school in a number of areas is deteriorated. And from a renovation perspective, the original building at NFA North Campus will be renovated as well. That's the 1936 era. NFA West is, believe it or not, 1921 it was built, but it's not our oldest facility in the district. We have a number of different areas where, on the exterior of the building, on the lower level, the fitness, we have brand-new fitness equipment in there, but that boom needs to be renovated. All of the sidewalks and the exterior, parking areas, safety issues with respect to trip hazard, replacement of the black back floor preventers. So this, this facility still uses steam, which is indicative of just how old it is. However, the associated piping, condensate piping, that replenishes the boilers, it's past the point of deterioration and needs to be replaced. So the mechanical infrastructure is critical in this building. On the main level at West, we have a number of VCS items: ventilation, kitchen drainage, concrete ramps, repointing of the steps, replacement of the other concrete steps, and from a renovation perspective, the cafeterium, as you walk into the main, the front of the building, will have a complete renovation. Way in the back of the building here, there's an incubator lab that's used for internships, and that is critical to renovate as well. Again, removing all the old materials and replacing with new, with new furniture and new equipment. On the upper level of NFA West, chimney needs repointing, probably a little bit more than just repointing. Replacement of the damaged VCT floors throughout the building, and there is renovation on that level as well. The bathrooms on that, on that floor will be renovated. Wayne's coating, which is something that's rarely ever used, the team intends to salvage that by repointing it and instead of replacing it altogether. South Middle School. Throughout the planning process, we investigated a number of different options from as far back as over a year and a half ago. And from a cost-benefit perspective, there was a thought that maybe we would excise, repurpose South Middle School and explore the possibility of building a new high school to offset where those students would learn. But after further investigation and a cost-benefit analysis, it was clear to see that we needed to reinvest into South Middle School. With that comes a decision of a significant amount of resources because the building is pretty deteriorated. Replacement of condensate piping, windows, water distribution systems, exhaust fans, kitchen drainage, plumbing, those are all infrastructure issues that have to be addressed. They're part of the VCS items. From a renovation perspective, the locker rooms, the shops that are downstairs, the gymnasium, all will be completely renovated. On the main level, you'll have the original building, approximately 25,000 square feet. That will be renovated. And it's important, throughout this process, both at NFA main and in all of the buildings, the question arose as to, well, what will those spaces be occupied with? And quite frankly, the overarching research found that there's more demand than there is supply. So in that context, the Education Planning Committee will be convened upon the successful passing of the, of the bond referendum to collaborate and decide exactly what the best use of those instructional spaces would be. On the upper level, again, the original building's square footage will be renovated. Here we have VCS items, including reinforcing the chimney, parapet wall, including the flashing, that so that water doesn't go down inside the building, that needs to be replaced. Masonary walls, all of the deterioration to a high degree. Ventilation-wise, our fresh air system, there needs to be completely overhauled. Plumbing issues throughout the building will be addressed, air handling units, and I spoke about the renovations to the, to the original 1937 building. Heritage Middle School. Heritage was never built as a 6th through 8th middle school to begin with, so its space accommodations are a concern, especially as it, with respect to the cafeteria. There are shifts of students currently that are, that are scheduled for lunch, so it's not accommodating to the amount of students that are in the building, so that is a primary concern. As part of this plan, the cafeteria will be renovated, an additional 2,000 square feet of space added on to it. And there are a couple of pictures here of what that would look like from outside as well as inside. New Windsor School, as Ms. Malarki talked about, here we have our oldest building in the district. It's 118, no, 119 years old. The tower has four classrooms in it and hasn't been used for approximately three years. It's been vacated, and it's riddled with asbestos. So there's a two-part process in this demolition where an abatement would have to happen, and then we could demolish the building. Renovation of the gym into a library. We have, we have spaces within that school as a result of those classroom spaces not being available. Teachers inherently find spaces to deliver instruction, and many of those spaces are significantly undersized. So we're going to, in the next slide, we're going to be converting these, what's now classroom spaces, back into what their original intention was, which is storage. Here on the main level is the addition that will replace the tower building. You can see the line of demarcation where the tower was. It has a number of new classrooms and a connecting hallway, classrooms that are connecting to the existing, to the new construction. Internally, there'll be renovations of the office spaces, as well as the removal of the stage to make this cafeteria a permanent home. The library will be renovated into a classroom at that level. The site plan on the external, I believe Mr. Sulez has already begun on this piece, but the relocation of the playground is planned, as well as new bus loop, a new parking lot, excuse me, new car drop-off and a new parking lot. Here are some of the preview renditions of what that would look like. This entrance is on the back of this, planned for the back of the school, by the way. Valesgate, also as Ms. Malarki talked about, we have modulators that have been there since 1967. They were intended to be temporary, but they're still there and they're still being used. The plan will remove these modulators and replace with a small classroom wing, as well as renovation, internal renovations and OTPT, as well as a nurses station. Other internal renovations in classrooms as necessary. Outside of Valesgate, we have, we, there will be a new stormwater infrastructure to allow for better drainage, as well as parking lot and bus loop. Temple Hill. We have a number of different VCS items, which will be replaced, replacing the gym ventilation units, air handling units throughout the facility, relocate and replace, repointing the walls, replacing valves and piping. The boilers were replaced not too long ago, so they're relatively new, but the piping wasn't, so this is the next step in the process. Relocate the kiln, pointing up and repairs of the exterior walls, replacement of a water heater, replacement of door pads, a number of different building condition survey items. Same for the second floor. We have domestic water piping that will be replaced, elevated controls and finishes. We need ADA compliance in the bathrooms, we don't have that now, that has to be done. Adding fire dampers and other code compliance requirement. Replacement of handrails, upgrade of the ventilation, and of course, repointing of the chimney. Menno Hill, sister school to Temple Hill. Relatively the same scope to work, perhaps the storm drainage there is much more need of repair. Here, replacement of the ADA curb ramp, signpost, catch basins, stormwater drainage. The catch basins there are actually higher than some of the other lower grades. Replacement of the sidewalk and the subbase, guardrails, all necessary safety concerns that will be addressed. The basement and main level, replacement of air handling units, repairs to the foundation, replace the stucco and the damaged steel. The kiln needs to be, similar to Temple Hill, vinyl asbestos tile needs to be removed, again, air handling units replaced. Significant amount of work. Bonver Elementary School, which received a significant amount of resources in the last round of the capital, capital construction, most of the work is on the external, but there are some things on the inside that need to be addressed. The replacement of the ductwork and grills, the steps need to be repointed, ventilation, valves, domestic water valves and piping, replacement of floor drains, replacement of building controls. Right now, we are highly suspect district-wide when it comes to HVAC controls. Right now, we are highly suspect district-wide when it comes to HVAC controls. Frequent and even occasional building audits find systems that continue to operate despite the fact that they've been scheduled to be shut down. So in all of our facilities, that's actually costing us money. We need to address that. ADA compliance renovating the bathrooms. The upper level of Bonverl Elementary School, replacement of the interior doors and hardware, replacement of concrete sidewalk and curving, freezers, condensers, replacing both. These are all items that came from our five-year building condition survey. Sealing the exterior walls and windows. Cross-the-Town Elementary, again, not so much work on the internal aspect, but externally there are a number of slopes that need to be addressed, a number of trip hazards, concrete work on the exterior, on the exterior of the building, curves, waterproofing of the exterior walls. There is moisture getting down inside the, where the two, where the vertical walls meet the lower roofs. Damage floor drains due to moisture, replacement of the asphalt parking lot. Cross-the-Town's upper level, HVAC replacement units, air handling units will be replaced also, damaged ceilings, tile throughout the building, and again, mechanical equipment Garnet Town Leadership Academy, replacement of the concrete door pads, exhaust fans, asphalt sidewalk and sub base, pipes, repointing of the sump pit in the boiler room, replacement of shifting concrete, again, trip hazards, ventilation, and some landscaping, removal of freezing vegetation. Main level of Garnet Town is replacing the fencing, unit ventilators, concrete sidewalks, again, sub base underneath the external walkways, damaged asphalt, unit ventilators within the building, mechanical equipment. Ginnie Avenue School, the steps will be replaced leading up to the 3K entrance. These pictures speak a thousand words as far as what, things that weren't addressed in the, in the last capital project that still need to be done. Relocation of the kiln, replacement of piping, damaged curves, shifted concrete, damaged Roof and site plan, we have roof replacement, oh, sections of the roof. There are the steps I mentioned. We have counterflashing, again, this is material that prevents water from getting down inside of the walls, that that needs to be replaced with this indication of moisture penetration. Repair roof leaks. Horizons on Hudson, Magnus School, replacement of the stairs and handrails, electrical panels, redesign and replacement of the entrance steps, replacement of the stairs and the handrails. Second level, the internals, the external stairs and handrails, piping, the internal piping, updated bathrooms to ADA compliance, vinyl asbestos pile replacement, and replacement of the guardrail. Third level of Horizons, concrete on the retaining wall needs to be repaired, replace the uneven stair threads, this brick wall needs to be rebuilt, excuse me, replaced. Replace of the concrete retaining wall, you can get a good idea of the condition of it just to look at it, and the capstone. So what I just laid out for you is all of the BCS, the new construction, and the renovations, all laid out in Proposition One. Proposition Two is solely focused on indoor air quality and ventilation. And I wanted to put this, this data in here because when we first think about air conditioning installation or indoor air quality installation, we think about comfort. Well, and inherently, we think, well, students, generally, we think students, building occupants will be better off if the environment is comfortable. But there have been, there have been studies that have been conducted in terms of temperature in spaces as it applies to different, different types of learning and different practices. Reading competence, test scoring, student performance. As the temperatures are more comfortable and more stable and there's adequate ventilation in space, students perform better. Attendance, primarily due to the fact that there's probably no more environment where germs are spread than in a classroom or a school building because of the nature of the congestion of individuals. So that also allows cold germs. Adequate ventilation diminishes that. And as a result, students are able to attend school without, you know, because they're more healthy. Temperature control, anywhere from four to 16% increases student performance, decrease absences up to 12%. So here's the breakdown of the plugging, and with the exception of new construction, you'll see that most of the resources are equitably allocated. The CTE Center being the biggest cost center, and of course, South Middle School, we talked about all of the work that needs to be done there. But in every single school, there will be renovations, as you've seen, there will be, all of the BCS Priority One items will be addressed. The cost is 198 million, okay? That's for all 15 schools. Proposition Two is allocated according to the size of the school and the estimates for what it would take to put in new indoor air quality, air conditioning, ventilation systems for healthier environments, and the cost there is 59 million. We wanted to run some comparisons for the Board of Education as well as the community to see in terms of city school districts and what they're spending on capital projects. In Newburg, for our, the number of our students, the number of our buildings, approximately 17,000 per student. Albany City School District, it's at 18,000. Kingston City School District, four buildings, 120 million, it's over 18,000 per student. City School District of New Rochelle is at 9,700 per student, 11 buildings, 106 million. And Middletown, not far from here, eight buildings, 158 million, their cost is at 22,000 per student. So as far as Newburg is concerned, we're one of the, we're on the lowest end on a per student basis and most definitely on a per building basis. So, significant concern for the committee, in addition to addressing all of the needs, was how was it going to affect our community as far as taxes were concerned? And I'm going to just walk you through the scenario. We would sit down and collaborate, as Dr. Vidia said, we would deliberate to decide what schools of work were more important. You're in as large a school district as we are, we wanted to get as much work completed. All of it is needs-based. There were much more significant schools of work that were considered that we had to forego specifically because of, we were mindful of how it would affect our taxpayers. And the key to that was how much aid we would get. So the basic formula is the project cost, Proposition One, project cost is 198 million. The building aid we will receive is 128 million, which is a significant portion. There is, Board of Education voted for a, to establish a $10 million capital reserve which will be dedicated to this project. And the local share, our local tax base is, amount is at 60 million. For Proposition Two, project cost is 59 million, again, to put new centralized systems in all of the schools. Building aid covers 45 million of that 59. There's no capital reserve, so the local share is at 14 million. And I do want to say that, given the systems that we have installed that are not only antiquated and deficient, they're highly inefficient, that there's a payback towards that 14 million that will come over time in terms of energy efficiency. We spend an enormous amount of money each year on systems that are not working as well and as efficient as they should. We have shy of 400 window air conditioning units that are modestly effective and highly inefficient. So those will all be removed. Estimated homework tax impact for Proposition One, I'm going to complete the slide entirely here. So based on a home, you know what I'm going to do? Is that I'm, this is a complex and complicated formula, so I'm going, I couldn't think of a better person to walk you through this piece than Beth from Capital Markets Advisors. So Beth, if you will, mind me.
So Roger did run through all the building aid that you're going to be getting, so that was significant help in what's going to cost the average taxpayer. So what we needed to look at was to break it down so that the average taxpayer could understand what it is exactly that they're going to be paying based on all the numbers. So the estimated average, average monthly tax impact for a house assessed, full value of $100,000 is 98 cents per month. The estimated average monthly impact for Proposition One and Two, again, it's the average full value of a home of $100,000 is $1.82 per month. This includes that there will be no tax impact for the first eight years, and that's because that's when we're going to be working on the project and there's minimal tax impact during that time period. So, a home of full value, how many people actually have a home at a full value of $100,000 in the district? That is sort of a placeholder. What we're doing down here on the bottom for Proposition One and Proposition One and Two is showing you what a home with a full value at a number of different ranges will cost on a monthly basis, because I think that's what's really important. So we're looking at a home of a full value for Proposition One of 100,000 is 98 cents. For 200,000, we take 100,000 and we multiply it by two, that's how we get to it, it's $1.97. For a home with a full value of 300,000, we're talking about $2.95. The average full value of a home district-wide is about 200,000. So kind of showing you what it looks like at both ends. Proposition One and Two, a home at a full value of 100,000, we're looking at $1.82 a month. 200,000 is $3.63 a month, and for 300,000, it's $5.45 a month. I don't know if I want to get into exactly the formula and how we derive the numbers. I can certainly do that if anybody has any additional questions. I think we've done everything we can to get the numbers as low as we possibly can.
Thank you. So that's spectacular news. I would never substitute my judgment for anyone else's when it comes to the value of money, but this is significantly lower than where we originally started out this project, and we can get a tremendous amount of work done and make our buildings and our learning environments as they should be. There are other, there are all the benefits also, all the data benefits, increased volunteerism, but I'd like to bring your focus to return on investment. As a community, the economic return when, when resources are invested in schools is that property values increase. Anyone that repurchase a home, the first, maybe the second question that anyone seeking to buy a home is, how are the schools in the community? So there's a direct relation to school investment and higher property values. Fraction of families, businesses, a higher tax base equals to a lower tax base overall. So that's a, that's a significant benefit for the community in addition to the low, minimal tax impact, fiscal impact that you just witnessed. So we talked about the calendar. We're here today to present what we anticipate to be our final capital project plan. You'll also have the resolution to adopt the secret final at the March meeting, because the Board of Education would consider to adopt this capital project, and it is anticipated that we could, there's nothing stopping us from going out to vote for the referendum on the same day as the annual school budget vote. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Board members, first I'm going to ask, does anybody have questions? Just nod if you do. Okay. So what I'm going to do is, because of time, I'm going to limit everybody to three questions, so think ahead of time because I'm going to keep track, okay? So I'm going to start with Darren. Mr. Stridarn, sorry.
Do I get the three of other people's home cavity? Okay. Oh, I guess I'll start with NFA Main. On the page where you show the overall plan, we have the existing building and a new CTE building in the ball fields. There's a bridge that connects the two buildings. It's called a walkway. Based on the elevation, it's got to be a bridge. Do you know what the cost approximately is of that bridge? Because it's going to be probably 30 feet in the air and you have to have a flyer here to be able to walk underneath it.
Good question. So we, we have accounted for all of the schools of work that's in the project, so I'm going to ask Mr. Rodriguez, who, of Bonverl Group, if he's got the line items readily available.
Good evening. It wasn't a bridge that was calculated for, it was a covered walkway. And we have the project, 1.2 million in there for a covered walkway, but it's not a bridge as you're explaining it to me.
How high off the ground will it be?
So what it's going to do is, it's going to, as Mr. Rodriguez explained, it'll actually cut through the side of the hill that's there, so we're going to step the walkway down to the side of the hill. So it'll be excavation through the side of that slope with a covered walkway. To the extent that Andy says it's going to be a 114 slope.
Just to clarify, this walkway, will it be at ground level or is it going to be elevated in any kind of way?
It would be at ground level for the most part, but then, as Mr. Colby talked about, as it starts to go off the topography, it will be staged and stepped accordingly.
I just have to ask again. So if it's stepped, is it always at the ground level of the terrain?
So if you follow from NFA Main, the terrain is relatively flat to where the covered walkway would turn 90 degrees and head towards the new CTE Center. As it turns and heads As it turns and heads towards that direction is where the topography starts to incline. So there, there would be steps leading up to the CTE center.
I'm going to ask some questions. So how is that handicapped accessible? If there are steps, students in wheelchairs can't go up the steps.
That's correct. Their arrangement for that, the school within itself, and Mr. Colby can attest to this, the school itself will be ADA compliant. So that, this arrangement needs to be made for students to access the building in a different location. I'm sure those things will be taken into consideration.
I think that should be taken into consideration ahead of time because we have to prepare for students who want to travel from the CTE center to NFA Maine. They should have the same opportunity as everybody else.
Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Bergen.
What is the, how long, what's the mileage or what's the length of the walkway? Because I would think that kids, students that are taking CTE classes, they may also be taking classes at the main building. So how will they have enough time to travel between the two?
We discussed this extensively in committee. And the scheduling for the CTE classes is going to be done so that students are at the CTE center for all of their classes that they would take there for the morning and, and/or, excuse me, for the afternoon. So that once they're in the building, they're for half for, for the duration of their time, their curriculum time, and then they would move over to NFA Maine.
How much, how?
I'm sorry.
The length of that, that walkway. Is it a couple of miles? What is it? A mile, half a mile?
Approximately 250 yards.
Anybody else have questions? Mr. Levinsky, do you have a question?
Well, just a clarification. We, on, on a lot of the plans, we have renovations of existing space and it tells us what is going to be. Then there's also renovations that are to be determined. Then there's renovations that are staying the same. But there's some space that I know, I'm pretty sure is not staying the same, but it's not marked, just marked renovate, like renovate auto body or cosmetology or culinary. And I believe that will be completely removed and not renovated to that same space where it is now.
No, let me clarify that the TBD, the to be determined, is reflective of the incoming of the new curriculum assignment to that space. From a physical facilities perspective, yes. In answer to your question, the auto body, auto tech will be removed, all the equipment will be removed, and that space will be dedicated to the timings of the education planning committee. So it, that, that process has yet to happen.
I, I understand. I just say it's not clear upon, upon the plans that that's going to happen. There is space that's marked, will be renovated to be determined. That space is just marked renovate, just like its locker room renovations. We know it's staying, it's locker rooms, but it's going to be renovated. But those CTE programs are not being renovated for the same purpose.
No, 100% of the CTE curriculum will be administered in the new facility.
Any other questions? How about Mrs. Santiago first? And then I'll go to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I know you said that there's going to be, the changes will have benefits when it comes to efficiency and so forth. But do we have any idea or any estimates as to what these additions will cost going forward? You know, buildings around, maintenance and all that other stuff?
Operationally, I, in answer to your question, no definitive numbers, but operationally, just from the fact of, that we have new building materials, new systems, more, 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 more modern infrastructure would inherently lend itself to us more efficiently in that respect. As far as, well, staffing is one thing that would have to be discussed moving forward for the new CTE facility and perhaps any of the renovated spaces. In the Windsor, we discussed that in committee extensively. Doesn't seem to be like there'll be any, at this point, doesn't seem to be like there'll be any need for additional staffing there. Just based on what was there before, for the most part, it's getting replaced. I answer your question.
Partially. It's not so much the staff for the teaching and so forth, but just what buildings around, what type of maintenance, you know, will be needed if you have additional parking spaces, if you have additional seating areas, just overall.
I'm sure that there'll be a maintenance schedule put in place to incorporate those new, those new systems. But that hasn't been done yet at this point. Our next step, our first step is to, to determine if we're going to be successful when we, when we go out to the public for, I mean, we don't see any reason why we wouldn't be at this point. Partially optimistic, because the committee has really done their due diligence. Fiscally, as well as addressing the core needs, educational needs and infrastructure needs. So it's, it's a great plan. Something that we really should all be very proud of, you know? And we will be moving forward as we start seeing it materialize. But once we get confirmation that we have the resources to pursue our project, then all of those other, the educational planning committee, operations and maintenance will be, will start their planning process to address, to address the new systems.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I have two questions about, about the financing and the tax impact. First, it seemed like there's been a significant change in the estimated tax impact from the information that we received in September. So I'd like to understand if something significant has changed in the way it's being calculated. In September, we saw numbers that suggested that a, with a value of 250,000 would receive a tax impact of 1173 for both of the proposals. And in the information today, a home valued at 300,000 at approximately one-half the tax impact. So is there, would you like to explain what has changed in those calculations?
The difference between the two, and I'll let Beth speak, you know, definitively, has to do with the difference between the assessed value and the true value and all of those other calculations that go into determining what the actual tax is. But again, I couldn't think of a better person to explain that to you. Beth?
So when we were looking at the earlier numbers, we were looking at assessed value, a home assessed at $250,000. Since the district is made up of a number of different municipalities, the assessment rates are quite different depending on how you look at the different municipalities. So what we really needed to do was take a tax bill and convert it into true value, which is how everybody pays their taxes. When we look at the true value, the true value of the district is much higher than what the assessed value is. I think that was kind of a placeholder, that $250,000 assessed value home. In truth, the average assessed value of a home in the district is much lower.
You had another question, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct. It's actually on the, on the slide previous to this one. There is an outline of the funding sources for the project. Oh, I'm sorry, maybe it's two slides back? Yeah, right here. So I just wanted to kind of check my understanding of what each of these items are. My assumption is that building aid is aid that the district is eligible from New York State. So there is an impact. The taxpayer, this money did come from New York State taxpayers. But it's, it's special money that the district is eligible for because of the wealth or poverty levels within the district. Is that, that's correct? Yes?
That is true. Yes, so your taxes do cover building aid.
Right. And then the local share is taxes before through taxes on residents of the Newburgh School District. So this is money that's going to be directly by taxpayers of the, of the district itself.
Of the district, yes.
And my last question on this slide is, is it correct that $50 million of that local share is due to one specific project item, that CTE building? Because of the variances in the eligibility for, for building aid, that CTE building accounts for 50 of that 60 million dollars of the local share? Would that be correct as well?
I would have to check the numbers. It is, it is a larger portion, but I don't know the exact figure. And that is because your, your CTE center as a brand new building does get somewhat less building aid than, than renovating. Renovations get a much higher building aid ratio.
Mr. Howard, do you have a question?
Yes, Madam President. So being a real estate lab person, I need a little help. So you said assessed value as opposed to true value. What do I have to my taxes on the assessed value or the true value?
Currently, when you, when you look at your tax bill, you have an assessed value and then it gets multiplied by the equalization rate that's computed by the state. That gets you your true value. And then you're paying your taxes based on that true value. So your tax bill will show you both what your assessed value is and your true value. At least it doesn't mind districts. So that you can get an idea of what your actual taxes that you would be paying.
Any other questions, board members? Mr. Stridarn?
Going back to NFA Maine, the relocation of the ball fields, this scale of the existing ball field, can we transfer that over to the, this side area? It's a lot smaller, it's shown a lot smaller than it actually is. I don't think you can actually fit a field there, at least the two fields together. And what is the cost of the rebuilding of these fields? Because I know it originally wasn't included in the 198 million, but now it is. So what, what is the cost and what was removed to make way for the relocation of the ball fields?
There's $7 million allocated to say work on this project. It added 7 million. It was half a million dollars for the relocation of that ball field. That's what's currently budgeted.
Can you speak to the size and scale, please?
We can double check the scale, but I, I think it's an appropriate size of ball field based on what we're looking at here. But we'll confirm it.
Ms. Prokash, do you have anything to add? Mr. Walker, do you have any questions?
No.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, if you have one more, you can do it.
At South Middle School, the, not South, the New Windsor School, the existing stage is going to be removed from the cafeteria. Is it going to be rebuilt inside the gymnasium next to the, the music rooms?
Yes, that's correct.
How is that going to work with the gym? Is it going to be retractable stage or is that, is it going to be built in where the kids are playing gym and then the stage is there like in Paris?
So I think the plan, right, and I will be similar to the cafeteria now. So the stage is within the space, but it's separate. So it won't be infringing on the gym footprint.
Board members, any other questions, comments? Everybody's okay? All right. Dr. Dea, would you like to?
So thank you again to the team and to board members for, as Ms. Prokash said, over the last two years, just asking all the necessary questions. It's our intent at this point to bring this to a vote in March. So I would add that if you have additional questions that we can answer prior to March 12th, that you get those to us as soon as possible. And so on that note, Madam President, I'm going to go ahead and move to the next item. All right, so if you can go back to the first presentation.
So Dr. Schindler and I are going to present two proposals. And what we'd like to do is just preface kind of what we're looking to do this evening. We're not asking for a vote, we're simply asking for a conversation. So we're going to share the work of an advisory team that was established in the beginning of the year to take a look at some of the needs that we have in the district. We've come up with two ideas, and that's what they are at this point. They're ideas worthy of a conversation, all right? And so at some point, as, as we gather more input from you and others, we will then bring these ideas back for, for a vote in the very near future. With that said, we're going to go ahead and jump right in. So there's been a lot of talk in our district, but also across the state regarding the new accountability system, ESSA. And so the very first discussion point or proposal for this evening is to take a look at how to support our adolescents that are in middle school and in ninth grade. And so currently, we have four schools identified in the accountability system. We have two CSI schools and two TSI. And we have one pre-TSI, which means that they're in good standing and the state is closely monitoring. And if they are able to continue to do well, then they'll be fine, they'll remain in good standing. If they don't, then they're going to fall into the TSI status. SED under SNL is requiring school districts to report how resources are being allocated to each of the schools in the district. Last year, we were one of 66 school districts in the state. So lucky us, we were the first. This year, close to 300 schools are now going to report. And Newburgh being among the first that had to report will move into the phase two of this new process. And again, the purpose of that is simply to report to the state how resources are being allocated. And then lastly, as it pertains to the purpose, we want to make clear that while we have phenomenal programs in the district, right? This is not about simply resting there, but simply looking at what are our needs and what we can continue to provide scholars and their families. And so again, as it pertains to this particular age group, we have two traditional middle schools, six through eight, South and Heritage. We have two Hill schools in Metalville and Templeville. And part of what we'll be able to discuss tonight is the idea of going to a small, non-traditional junior high. And for those who may not know what a junior high is in New York State, it's a seven through nine. The district used to have seven through nine junior high schools, so that's not as innovative here. It's the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish. And in one of those is the size of the school. So we know children learn in different kinds of environments, right? So I think that's safe to say that we can all agree to that. If you are a child in our district that prefers a large, comprehensive setting, we have that. You desire particular CTE programs, we have that in various buildings. We, as of three years ago, created a non-traditional high school campus for students who prefer something much smaller, something much more intimate, and gave them an experience that was vastly different than what they would get at Maine and North. The same approach is being taken here for middle-aged children. The locations that we're considering at this point are Washington and Chesna. These are district-owned properties. There are pros and cons to each of those locations that we can certainly talk about this evening. We did discuss going outside of these two properties altogether. And ultimately decided that that probably wasn't the best plan because, one, it would cost the district money and it would be hard for me or anyone on the team to simply argue or try to convince. it would be hard for me or anyone on the team to simply argue or try to convince that that was a better approach when we would have two possible buildings to establish at the school. Number four speaks to this idea of an extension school, or, just quite frankly, creating a new school that has its own best goal. And both of those are worthy of consideration. So the extension school concept here simply means that this would be a campus that receives students primarily from South and Heritage. And it's not to say there aren't struggling students at the Hills, there are. But those are two schools in good standing. They're much smaller, they're at the size of South and Heritage. So we feel confident at this point, that given that they're in good standing, and they're at the size of these other two schools that are identified, that we should prioritize our focus right now on South and Heritage. So if I'm a child at either one of those two schools, I'm not particularly doing well, the environment just isn't meeting my needs, I need something different, I could attend this particular campus. Part of what we discussed was, do I stay there permanently? What are the pros and cons to that? Do I stay there for a quarter? Or do I stay there for a much longer time? At this point, what we're proposing is if we go with the extension campus concept, that any child who comes to this campus would have to stay there for at least a semester. And the reason for that is, it's kind of hard to establish stability and continuity if you have kids coming in and out. So at least a semester, if you demonstrate that you're doing well, and you want to go back, that could be a conversation in terms of a transitional plan back to your home-based school. The other option is simply to make it a new school altogether with its own best goal. At the district, we have started some initial work around the sort of practices. It's certainly something that we have to double down on. It's in our code of conduct. We have just a number of teachers and administrators trained, and it's something that we have to prioritize and continue. And because this is a much smaller campus, we need to make sure that children who come to this particular school have the right kinds of supports, so that way if they decide to stay or go, they'll be successful. So why seven, eight, nine? Certainly, we had a conversation around making this six, seven, eight. And again, I think some of you would prefer one or the other. We know, much earlier than sixth grade, but certainly when a child transitions to middle school, in sixth grade, we have data that indicates whether a child's going to stay on track for graduation or not. So this is an attempt to grab them early, give them something much more personalized with the right kinds of supports, and set them up so that way they get to the high school and become successful. Ninth grade happens to be a grade where we experience a lot of children with failure rates. Some of our highest failure rates are in ninth grade. So if we're able to grab them early and hold on to them in ninth grade, then we believe that they'll have a better chance of graduating on time for that reason. So, understand, you didn't hear me say alternative, right? Alternative unfortunately comes with a negative connotation. NFA West is not an alternative school, it's a non-traditional school where children have choice. We want to treat this very similarly. So it's not an alternative school, it's a non-traditional campus, and some of the things that we're going to try to prioritize in some of the features here is mindfulness training. We have children, or adolescents, that really struggle with conflict. They struggle with valuing themselves, they struggle with self-esteem and confidence. And so if we were to engage them in meditation and yoga and some of the other practices that are starting to emerge from the research, we feel that, you know, these adolescent children will have half the kinds of skills needed to be self-disciplined. We're considering uniforms. I get their pros and cons to uniforms. But if students had a hand in the design and took pride in its development, there's something to be said for children in uniforms that feel professional and feel respected. Before we go to assessment, so here we're really taking the approach of what we already know to be true. There are children who just don't do well on quizzes and tests and state exams. Now, we're in New York State, so we can't do much about the state exam piece. But we can do a lot around how we assess children, both formatively and summatively. It doesn't have to be a test or quiz, and in fact, there are schools in the state that don't give any test or quizzes. They assess their children differently, and that would be the same approach we would take here. And then lastly, as it pertains to the design features, one of the key things here is simply our mental model on why we're designing the school to begin with. So if we were simply to take the approach of, you're lacking, and we need to somehow fix you to get you to where you want to be, I would argue that's an absolutely wrong approach to take. It's a deficit model approach, you only see what's broken, what's lacking, and the need to try to fill, replace, or fix. But instead, if you would, if you'd be willing to accept that even children who fail, even children who have social difficulties, even children who display the kinds of behaviors that get them suspended, if you'd be willing to accept that even they have many strengths and talents, then the asset-based approach, we feel would be much more rewarding. So it's not so much what you're lacking, it's let's start from where you're, you know, where you're good at. What are your strengths, what are your talents, and let's build from there. Some additional features is establishing an advisory system. This is not NFA West. NFA West has its own structure and its own identity. But we do have close to one hundred and eighty kids across the district that are in the field, whether they're doing clinical work, field work, or internships. This could be an opportunity for children at this particular campus to do some shadowing in any one of those sessions. Building on the asset-based approach, we're considering something called the Teach Me Seminar or the Master Class. So it's been said that the best way to know if you really know and understand something is your ability to teach it to someone else. So, NFA West has expeditions. This particular campus would have opportunities to teach from a place of strength and talent. There would be a strong community service component to this, and similar to some other programs that we have, there would be a summer extension. So I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Schindler to talk about the high school.
Thank you, Dr. Pardia. Let's rethink our high school experience. With our ESSA accountability, we want to start looking at offering different opportunities for our students. You'll see in a later slide that there is multi-students and targeted population that we would be able to serve through the evening school. Students would be offered an opportunity for dual enrollment, dual enrollment in our day program and in our evening program, dual enrollment in our high school coursework as well as college coursework. We will have an opportunity for parent-student workshops, community partnerships. Targeted population will allow students whose schedules limit them an opportunity to take advantage of all the CTE offerings within our district, and have an opportunity in an evening program, either add a CTE certificate, or have an opportunity to just take advancement. Our data shows us that we have overaged and undercredited students who are off track for graduation. These students would have completed at least a year of school, yet would be offered an additional opportunity in an evening program to recover credits. We also have students that have significant challenges outside of their school day. They may have adult responsibilities, such as caring for their family, maybe a family of their own, or having to provide for the family that they're with. This will allow them to go to school in flexible hours, whether they're starting their day later, just attending an evening program, or like I said, maybe starting at noon and ending at eight in the evening. Our English language learners are not given the same access because of state regulations that require them to have standalone classes. Currently, our data shows us that there's nearly one hundred students that have to take a standalone ELL class to provide them language proficiency. However, that doesn't earn them credit towards graduation. Offering them more periods at the end of the school day will offer them an opportunity to graduate with their peers, as well as advancing their education. Additional offerings for challenging program are advanced placement and accelerated students. Sometimes schedules may hinder their opportunities during the day, maybe they may be involved in sports, maybe they want to take advantage of the CTE, but they just can't. Some students are ready for college earlier than others, so why not give them that opportunity? The grade span would be ten through twelfth grade. Our enrollment of first year, we anticipate seventy-five, then ninety, and then increasing it to one hundred and one. The location we're seeking is NFA Maine, with two sessions, from two-thirty to five-thirty and five-thirty to eight-thirty. So if I am involved in an after-school club or activity, I can stay for an extended session from five-thirty to eight-thirty. Within those sessions, each day, it would be a Tuesday through Friday schedule, each day dedicated to a different core. So rather than having to attend all four days for a specific amount of time, I would only have to attend one day, which means I would have to just maybe dedicate one of my evenings or afternoons to advance my academics. Also, for faculty, they can have a focus area of content for one day, and only have to give up one afternoon or one evening to add extra support for students. The future phases of this, we hope to include, oh, sorry, adult opportunities, career planning, and CTE certification opportunities. Within three hours, we have, we reveal to build in flexible scheduling. That would also provide a block schedule that would provide them different intended service projects through the evening. We intend to have multiple relationships with community organizations, post-graduation services, built-in emotional support, and career and college center that can help our students in this program as well. I don't want to give all of these to you. I already touched on the content focus for each day, academic and life plan for students, extended blocks, graduation portfolios, and a student self-awareness and active partners in their educational plans. Dr. Pardia, I'm going to leave the data to you.
So earlier I indicated that, you know, we have data, you already know from just historical data of the grades and the areas where children, when they transition, whether it's to middle school or high school, the struggles that they have. We've identified data that highlights the number of students that are overaged and undercredited. And so for those reasons, in addition to what we are learning as part of the new ESSA accountability structure, we feel that these are two particular campuses and designs worth consideration. Some staffing projections you can see in front of you, so we won't go through each bullet, but part of the work, so where we are right now, is the consideration of what impact these ideas would have. And again, if not a vote tonight, there's simply a conversation, so part of what we'll do is, you know, we have people ready to take notes on the conversation, you know, what parts of this intrigue you, what are questions you might have that we'll take back to the advisory team, discuss a little bit more, et cetera. So on that note, Madam President, I'd like to open the floor up for conversation.
Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Prokosh?
As far as the junior high, I like the idea of seven through nine. My only, my one thing I'd like to see is, if someone's going to sign up for the school, I'd like to see them have to stay in a year, not a semester or a quarter, because sometimes it takes a year for that rapport to build up, for the trust to build up between student, scholar, and teacher. And I think that anything less than that, it wouldn't be conducive to, you know, for that. My only qualm I have with seven through nine is what happens, because students go K to V, and then we have that sixth grade kind of hangout, you know, year, and then seven through nine.
You suggesting a six through nine?
Yeah, I was thinking something like that. Because otherwise, that whole year is a kind of a lost year.
Yeah, and I think our fifth-grade teachers, counselors, administrators probably could identify students at that point, so we'll certainly put that on the table.
At least maybe even a smaller contingent, and then maybe the others will come in at seventh grade, you know. And as far as night school, I really like the idea of the night school and having the two sessions like that, because there's, you know, there's quite a few students that have fallen off even to twelfth grade and simply have stopped, so they might only have to take one or two courses in order to complete, you know, their high school career. So I do like that, and I like the idea of expanding it later on to CTE programs that we used to have in the, in the night school.
Board members, anybody else? Mr. Howard?
Yes, Madam President. So, I want to concur with my colleague, Ms. Prokosh, but I think that the identification of these children for this non-traditional should be focused more earlier. But I would be more in favor of a six through eight. And I would love, since we're talking about reading, I want things a little differently, I would love for us to consider a ninth-grade academy, pure ninth-grade academy. And I think that that type of program would get those kids ready for that, but more importantly, that ninth-grade academy will allow us to get kids ready for ten through twelve. I don't know if that could be part of the discussion now, but the children that will come in the, or that would be located for this type of program, it's got to be one that is identified early, because a lot of those problems start, they'll start in sixth grade, they start earlier. So, I like the approach, I like the idea, but I would love to see it start a little earlier.
Okay, so we'll certainly put that on the table as well.
Mr. Walker?
I agree with both of my colleagues here. Looking at this proposal, I find it very innovative and very promising for our students. But I'd like to reemphasize that I firmly believe that it should start earlier. I think perhaps we should do a study to see if the students, particularly male students, are falling behind as early as the fourth grade, if not second. I think that would be an important thing to do, and to keep, to keep the options open here, I think is a tremendous springboard opportunity. Thank you.
So we'll go back and start looking at fourth and fifth grade data for attendance, report cards, behavior, and some other identifiers, and see if, again, keep in mind that this piece is designed to be small, so that's why in your packet you see anywhere from twenty to thirty kids per grade.
Board members, anybody else? Mr. Stradion and Mr. Lewinsky?
On the junior high school campus, what is the cost to refurbish each of the buildings, Chestnut and Washington Street?
Mr. Kern?
The Washington Street is roughly about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to go through and change out kitchen, tech, security, fencing, just to get into the weekend night. Chestnut Street would have, just the repairs there is five hundred and ninety thousand, because we do have to add an elevator there, but we'd also have to add a renovation done somewhere as to move everything from Chestnut out.
Whatever happened to selling Washington Street School? What happened to that?
It's still on the table, but it hasn't been, the final paperwork hasn't been presented yet to the board. yet to the, to the board.
Mr. Levinstein, you have a question?
Well, yeah, just a comment. If the junior high school proposal is similar to the West Street just for younger students, I was just wondering if we could see the data from that, how that's helped the students there, and what they do, and maybe that would help pushing a proposal like this along.
Yeah, you missed an opportunity on Friday to just see it in action, but I want to be careful, however, because I'm not, you know, I haven't said outside of the non-traditional component, this is not West. The intern shadow day is, it can be shadowing a student at West, it could be shadowing a student from North at St. Luke's Hospital doing clinical hours. Outside of those two features, this would feel and look dramatically different than anything West has to offer. The size certainly helps, but there are children that really need something much smaller. But yeah, we can certainly, you know, pull data for, for West, but it's not, it's not a junior West.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, so Dr. Pridy, just being a consideration stage, and you haven't really decided on the two, I personally would rather see students at Chestnut Street and have adults at the Washington Street, if you're going to move people out of the Chestnut Street area and bring them down to Washington Street because of that location, I'd rather have the students up at the Chestnut location.
Yeah, so can we, can we, because the location is pretty significant. So, so I'm, you know, Mr. Howard's recommending Chestnut. We walk Chestnut, it can work. It's not as nice of a building as Washington Street, but I know there are, there are pros and cons to both buildings, and I'd really love to hear from the board as to one or the other. So Mr. Howard is, sounds like he's in favor of Chestnut.
Mr. Stridion, do you have a question?
I don't like either one of the buildings. I mean, it's got to be another location.
So guess what? Those are the two buildings we own, and, and I kind of hint, you know, I kind of mentioned this earlier, to ask you or ask the community to pay for another property when we have two of those, just doesn't sound, doesn't sound right.
It's going to cost almost $500,000 to renovate. I'm sure you could buy a building that's soon around the year. I mean, we could look. I'll look.
Mr. Kern, can you just highlight the process for securing a building? One of the things that in securing buildings, you have to have a long-term plan that you need space in the district. We're a district that has excess capacity at this point here. It's been proven to us every time we've gone to State Ed to talk about state aid for the, for the district and what we'd like to do here. Unless it's in the five-year plan and you conclude that you need the, the space, it's not aidable, it's going to be 100% cost to the district, and to secure a building, you have to go to public program.
Go ahead, I'll go ahead for you.
I just had one other comment. In terms of increasing participation in this school and raising self-awareness and self-confidence, I would hope that you might consider in your plan adding some type of cross mentoring, I'm sorry, cross-peer tutor to teach our kids, to give our kids hands-on way of teaching and learning and helping each other. Thank you.
Mr. Santiago, so you had your hand up there.
I'm just questioning, for NFA, would there be any renovations and changes? What would be expected there to accommodate the evening school?
For the evening school, we are not anticipating any renovation work there. We would be using the existing space to facilitate the program.
I have a couple of comments. One, I don't like 7 through 9, I prefer 6 through 8. I think that we have that kind of thing going in our other school. I also think that having students stay only one semester would mean that they're moving from school to school more often than they should, and statistics and studies have shown that every move that a student makes, they lose two years. So these kids are needy in different ways. We don't need to make them more needy by having them change their school building or their school site more than, than they should. So one semester really is way too short for any type of stay. And I think we can learn from something that's happening at West, and, and that is, an extension of a school really won't work unless the principal of that school really is embedded in understanding of the program and the culture of the new school that you're doing. And so I think that we really need to visit, revisit the West Street extension or new beds code, and then simultaneously look at the new program for that.
Mr. Stridion, you have a question?
Yes, on the evening school, I like the concept of an evening school, but I don't understand, we're going to have students coming at night, how are they going to get there? Is there going to be transportation provided for these students, or are they going to have to take taxis to get there, walking? It doesn't seem as if it's going to be a draw for students that they have issues with being able to afford taxis. And then can we get a guarantee that any kind of computer learning or Apex is not going to be used at this evening school?
We're going to consider all opportunities that support children in whether they're recovering in class or not. Whatever we can put in front of a child that will assist them is what we'll try to do.
The reason why I say that is, we're in the business of learning, and you're in your classroom, you're learning. When you're with Apex, you're just passing. We don't want kids just to pass, we want them to learn. So for me personally, the concept of an evening school should be about learning, and that's what we're presenting.
Anybody else, questions, comments? Thank you.
Just to comment what Mr. Stridion said. I think we're all concerned here about learning, and regardless of how we're able to do it, I believe that if we concentrate on curriculum, on 21st century curriculum, like we're focusing on a 21st century proposal, that learning will take place. We have to stick or stay away from that kind of frozen food packaging. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, a couple of comments. First, about the middle school proposal. I would appreciate it if we could get more specific or try to articulate what the purpose of the school would be. And we kind of hinted that it's for students that would do better there than, than in the, in the Hill schools, for instance, pardon me, than in the South or in Heritage. But it would be nice to articulate that and say, say what it is that would give students the option of going to the school. And if we can say what that is, I think a good follow-up question to explore would be, is there another way to meet that need besides creating a separate facility? And another question that a couple of people have touched upon is, if there's that need, is that something that should get, should get addressed before the student is, is at that middle school level? Is it something that can be addressed sooner? I think those are important questions to explore. As far as the high school, the evening school, I, I do like the idea of maximizing the utility of our facilities. You know, we have all these facilities, I think they should be used as, as much as we can. One concern that I have with the details that we saw today is that it seems like we're addressing several different types of students that have special needs. There's ELLs, there are students who are behind in credits, and then there are advanced students. And I think it, it might be challenging to, to meet those diverse needs all at, at one time. I guess it's a question about purpose there, too. I do like the idea of maximizing our use of facilities, but perhaps it would be easier to achieve success if we could pick one of those targets, say, or instead of trying to cover all of the bases. I'm also just a little confused about the idea of, of having one course subject per day and how that would affect the non-course subjects, would, is the idea that there would be one course per day and then the students would just attend one day of the, the week? I don't know how that would kind of play out across the different student needs, so more te, more details there would be interesting.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and so tonight was to have the conversation, we'll get more into the details as we start to kind of understand sort of what your preference and how you feel about the concepts altogether.
Ms. Procos?
Yes, I just wanted to go on to what Mr. Johnson had said. When I saw that night school years ago, we had all kinds of students. We had students that were, they are dual, that went to school during the day, that wanted to graduate earlier, and they, they went to night school. We had students that were deficient. We had students that worked all day and came to school at night. We had students that were there taking an Americanization classes to get their citizenship. So we had a lot of different types of students, and it worked very, very well. The only reason why it stopped is we got into that real physical problem and we had to cut something out. But that was an extremely successful program. And also, as far as going into the middle school, many things start to come out when students started going to adolescence. So you might not see something early on, but you're going to start to see it in sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And if we can catch the students earlier or, or try to meet their needs in a small setting, it might set up for success then going into high school. But a lot of things start to happen great when they, when they start to get into adolescence, again, that you don't see early on. And some of the baggage that these children come into school with, a small setting, and a family type of atmosphere, many times the thing that saves them, rather than dropping out of school and becoming successful students. I've seen it at West over the last few years, and if, if last Friday was any example of the growth, it was, it was inspiring to hear what those students did in, in their poetry and to see that their, the work that they put up on the walls. I could have listened all day to that. It was, I, I, in some cases, I don't think the adults sitting around the table, there was a dry-eyed house for some of the things these kids were, felt comfortable enough to say their poetry about. It was, it was all inspiring.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, just to piggyback on what Ms. Procos said, I think the real idea with this junior high concept, and it's, it's almost like an extension down, because as she said, when we saw or at NFA West, what we're doing was happening over there. That student population that's being addressed over there, those issues start earlier than ninth grade. And for us to extend downward and try to find those kids earlier, it's going to give a lot of, a lot of children opportunities to be successful once they migrate towards the high, high school level. And I think it's so important, some of the ideas that's used over at West as far as the smaller class environment and things, and ideas that, that those children, to be candid for West, dig down to the elementary school levels and find those children, that having those issues, those problems earlier. Because one thing about our district, we have a very diverse district, and a lot of different things are going on, there are a lot of different kids in our district that we need to be more cognizant of. And I think this includes, we're touching them earlier, we're finding them earlier, which is giving them a better opportunity to be successful going forward.
Mr. Walker?
Again, having thought in the district, one of the things I love, and at this point still miss about teaching, there was its diversity. One of the lessons that I learned very quickly, that our students are very sophisticated when it comes to interacting with each other, no matter what their group might be, no matter what their wealth might be, they have a sophistication that more homogeneous communities might not have. And I think that we can exploit that, those relationships for the betterment of the whole community. And I think part of that would be to more teach workshops about where we're going, teach workshops about different profiles of students, because I learned probably too late that students, a student from 1998 is not the same as a student from 2005. And to understand that and get that kind of feedback or direction from professionals who study that would be a great opportunity for the entire district and teachers. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Word of education, so we'll go bring this information back, questions back to, to the board room and continue to drill down, and it's our hope that our next board meeting we be able to present a proposal for you.
Okay, so I'm going to do a couple different things. One, we're going to take a manay o' minute, which either is going to be up in scratch or is the length of the energy, whatever, but then Dr. Pridy is going to do the budget, and then I'm going to do the portion of the, of the agenda that has to do with the comments. So some of you I know that have to get to sleep early, you have to get up early, and you go after that, okay? So let's take a manay o' minute.
has had a chance to see the budget. So it's not the goal tonight to engage in a conversation and go through each other components like we do every year. Tonight is simply an opportunity for myself and for Mr. Kern to simply give an overarching view of a draft budget. Like all drafts, there's likely to be some changes along the way. One critical change that tends to happen during this critical time of the budget cycle is getting more information from New York State. The past several years, we anticipated getting more aid. So if you feel there should be a priority that's not being addressed this evening, or hasn't been addressed in each of the committee meetings, there's still opportunities to discuss budget at the committees, right? So that was something new that we did this year. That's a standing item, and I would ask that you continue to exercise the committee as a forum to have critical conversations, and then obviously bring it to the entire board. So on that note, I'm going to go ahead and proceed and highlight again that this is my draft budget, and it's our hope, or what we will do moving forward, is every board meeting thereafter will be a standing item under my section for, for the budget. So we will continuously have discussions about the budget at committee meetings and in public at board meetings. So this is our very powerful mission and vision. It's on the back wall, it's around our district, and no one should be surprised by what this is or what it stands for. is or what it stands for. So I'm not going to go through each of them and kind of break down the significance of it, but this is our work. We aspire to be a district that is inclusive. We are not a district today that is fully inclusive. So our work is to get there. That's the charge, to be a district that as a result of collaboration and working in partnership, that we become this place. And our day-to-day work is to inspire our scholars, to be leaders beyond Academy Field. For those of you who are new in the audience this evening, Academy Field is where our seniors graduate. And very specifically, what we talk about as it relates to the mission is loving our scholars in such a way that feels and looks like love that you give your own biological family. Because the love you give to them, you would agree that simply getting to graduation is a minimal expectation. And I'm sure you would also agree with me that in your own households, with your family members, you don't talk about graduation as the life goal. It's always about what happens after the point you graduate high school. That's the kind of love we're talking about in our district. This year's mantra, which kicks off the budget cycle, this is step one, is identifying in each given year, something that we really can get around, something that binds us, something that makes us unique. Last year, the mantra was do it with love. This year is we are one. And we are one speaks to being a family, being united, being an environment and a community where all people are welcome and accepted, among many, many other things that I shared, when we welcome back all our teachers and staff members in September. Our budgets continue to be driven by Vision 2020, the Way Forward. And again, at this time of the year, you always hear me say that we are not one of these districts that simply throws things on the wall and sees what sticks. We design our budget based on our strategic plan. So these five pillars are the driving force over the five-year span of the strategic plan. So this is the budget process, there are eight steps. Key dates as it relates to the calendar, the budget calendar that you adopted and accepted in October, and as you can see in gold in February, this is where we're at in this given moment. These are the overarching budget categories. So as we sit down, my team and I, and we start to hammer out, well, how are we doing with this year's budget? What are the comparisons for expenses? And what do we have coming in for revenue? And what do we need to prioritize as it relates to the strategic plan? These are the driving, cost drivers for next year's budget as of today. I'll just give you a minute to look at it, and then I'll explain each. So under pillar two, that speaks to effective leadership. Now, we certainly have invested in school leadership and central office leadership over the last four years. We have had an increase in building administration as well as central office administration. This budget draws particular attention to not increasing central office or building level leadership, but in fact, building leadership at the teacher level. So we have phenomenal teachers across our district that have no desire in ever becoming an administrator. They're happy. They don't want that job. However, they still have a lot to offer. And so when we speak of leadership, we're not just talking about someone's title, we're talking about the impact that they can have on a particular school and the entire district. This is not an impact to the general fund budget. So what we're looking at here in the form of teacher leadership pathways is roughly a hundred and fifty thousand that will be earmarked in Title II, which is an allowable expense. And we feel that we're ready at this point to really start looking at ways to keep teachers in their respective roles, in their classrooms, who have no desire again in being administrators, but certainly can have a profound impact on children and the entire school community. So we are going to ask to allocate particular monies to various teacher leadership pathways. Pillar three is around equity and access, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here because Dr. Spindler and I already touched on that piece earlier. And then last is pillar five, all around safe and secure environments. We have, as a district, made many investments to date on safety. We have and will continue over the next couple of weeks to put a metal detector in each building. We have increased cameras and the quality of those cameras across the district. We have put in vestibules and reinforced vestibules across the district. We have over $2 million at the state waiting to be approved that is solely on school safety and security. We have increased safety monitors over the last four years. This proposal for next year speaks to having armed officers in our schools. Now, just a little bit honest, because I know philosophically, there could be people in our community and some of you who are against that. And personally and professionally, I would understand any one of you or anyone in our community that says, yeah, I'm not comfortable with that, I don't think that's the right approach. And I would respect that sentiment. Except, we live in a country where schools are no longer the safest places that they used to be. In fact, schools are now targets. We are the only school district in the county that has metal detectors, but all the other districts in the county have put armed officers in their buildings. Now, I'm not proposing this simply to be like other people. We're unique, they follow us. However, if you're willing to accept or engage in a conversation around the importance of this, you'll hear from the community members as we did, that they feel this is an absolute need. We engaged in two town halls where this was the sole conversation. How do you feel about metal detectors and how do you feel about having armed officers in our schools? And there were debates. But I walked out of each of those town halls and felt that this was a measure that we needed to take. So this budget is calling for an additional six SROs that will be contracted through each of the police municipalities. Governor's budget, so every year, with the exception of one or two, the governor releases his budget in January. And this is where we get our first state aid run. This past year, as you see on the screen, we got 0.9%. This was extremely disappointing. That equated to 1.4 million. We have in previous years got a lot more than that. So obviously, when you anticipate getting more aid, but you get less than 1%, you have to readjust some plans. Now, during this next few weeks, next couple of months, maybe there'll be more aid. I'm not as optimistic, because as many of you know, the Comptroller and the Governor had a press conference a couple of weeks ago where they reported that the state had a 3.2, 3.3 billion dollar gap. I will be in Albany on Monday and Tuesday as part of lobbying efforts for our district and other districts in New York State to really get the ears of some of our legislators to, you know, help them understand why this is still a need, albeit the state is still facing a gap. Another critical question that we're often faced with is what is going to be the tax cap? What's going to be the tax levy? And so as you see on this slide, there are two different things that you're reading. There's a budget-to-budget increase and a tax levy increase. And we really should just stay on this slide for a minute, because it tells a very particular story. And one story it tells is the responsiveness and the respect that we have demonstrated to our community when we go about creating the budget. So as you can see, we are within our legal right as an entity to increase taxes to the legal threshold. We have made the decision not to do that. We have made the decision to keep it flat at zero. You can also see, going all the way back to 2012, what the budget-to-budget increases were. Over the last four years, you can see that we have steadily had less of a budget-to-budget increase. And what's being proposed as of today is a 1.6% increase. So that's the lowest, the second lowest over the last four years, but certainly over the last seven or eight, you can see a trend. So I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Kern, and he'll take us through some of the numbers.
Thank you, Dr. Pedia. Good evening. Next year's budget, we're looking at a budget increase of about 1.66% for about $4.5 million, jumping from 275.3 to 270, now almost $280 million. Source of revenue is a good place to start. About 56.5% of our budget comes from the state through aid. We'll get into the different aid categories on the next slide. Tax levy is 110,864,000. It's going to be the same as it was last year and very close to the last two years here. And then miscellaneous revenue will be two slides down, and we'll show what the 4% of the revenue comes from there. State has broken up into several categories. You get a flat rate of our foundation aid. This has been much talk about in the state years ago. There's supposed to be a large increase in the foundation aid. It's been pretty flat the last couple of years. We are nowhere near to be 100% of what the state had promised us back in the Pataki and Patterson years. Special service aid is for exceptional learners. This is the aid we receive back from our OSCE placements and our private placement students. High-cost aid is the, oh, excuse me, high-cost aid is the exceptional learners. Special services aid, since we are a non-component of OSCE's district, this is where our technology aid comes from, and our CTE aid, the money we get back from the state for having our own programs in the high school. Instructional aid materials is our textbooks, our technology, software, software, and the library materials that we get, special funding from the state. Transportation, this is our to-and-from, school transportation for our students. High tax aid is an aid that was given back probably about eight years ago. It's a flat aid, it's a flat amount that's given every year into districts that have high property tax level. Building aid, this is the aid we get from the state for our past building projects. And this is part of our calculation that we use for the tax cap. So you see, it's a $1.4 million increase over last year, and this is just the governor's budget. He's anticipating an on-time budget of April 1st. No unimpended on the date. Miscellaneous revenues, what we get in as another tax item is what we call a pilot, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. These are the IDA has granted special privileges to different businesses in the area, and we do get in these payments during the year. This year here, we're looking at almost $2.1 million. We do get interest and penalties on people that pay their taxes late. There's a three sessions that we have for taxes, and if you don't pay all in the first one, there's an interest that you do pay going forward. As a city-school district, we have a utility tax. This has been in place for probably 20 years here. And what it is, it's the taxes on cell phone usage, your utilities such as electric, gas, and so forth. Local revenue, this makes up some of the items that we get in, especially items like refunds from prior years and any of the local revenues that we pick up. Interphone transfers on our grants and that, there's an indirect cost that the district does to the grants. This takes care of the business office, providing purchase orders, payroll, and the likes. There's miscellaneous revenue, and then the appropriated fund balance is an item for this year here. This is money that's coming, that's going to be accessed in this year here that we'd like to carry forward into next year. One of the things we have identified here on a $275 million budget, we're projecting our revenue to be over that amount, so we'd like to take that into next year as part of the revenue for next year in order to keep the tax levy at a zero. The draft budget, we're showing no projected gap at this point here and point here, that's the presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. So, Madam President, at this time, as we conclude the budget presentation, I'd like to just quickly reiterate the process that we'll use moving forward. So board members, please get your questions to us. Utilize the committees as a forum to talk about the budget. And then at our March 12 board meeting, this will be a standing item where we will begin to go through each of the sections of the budget as we do every year.
Board members, do you have any questions now? Yes, Mr. Strider?
Can we get a breakdown of what we're going to go over at the next meeting, how far into the budget, so we can kind of prepare slot by slot? Okay, and the other question is, what is the projected budget surplus for the 18, 19 school year?
At this point here, we're looking at approximately $5 million surplus for the year.
Mr. Kern, what percent does that represent?
Roughly about 1.7% of the budget.
Are there any other questions at this time?
Okay, Madam President, at this time, I conclude my section.
Thank you, Dr. Pedia. We're now at the portion of the agenda for public discussion on non-agenda items. Please refer to the procedure sheet next to the assignment sheet. I do have three people signed up. The first person is Ms. Stacy Moran.
My name is Stacy Moran, and I am the president of the Newburgh Teachers Association. As you're all aware, the members of the Newburgh Board of Education are responsible for the adoption and assessment of written policies by which our district is governed. You then delegate the implementation of those policies to the superintendent, who in turn creates a chain of command in which every member is expected to carry out these policies. I am speaking tonight because there appear to be gaps in communication within the chain of command, and I want to ensure that the voices of the members of the NTA are being heard despite these gaps. For example, the Health and Safety Committee used to meet monthly with very few exceptions. Since 2017, when it fell into the purview of a new district leader, it only meets four times a year. This leaves concerns unheard for months and prevents the committee's participation in the investigation and disposition of health and safety complaints, as is their charge for Board Policy 8112. The alert team meetings have also been canceled for the past three months. As a result, the NTA has had no way to communicate our concerns regarding safety, which include: broken scanners in the cafeterias at two of the high school campuses, the lack of protocol to alert teachers of emergency situations within their buildings, and the need for our security guards to man specific areas of some buildings. Similarly, the Save Committee met today for the first time since October. As part of its advisory function, members of the committee recommend annual changes to the Code of Conduct. They also discussed the implementation of the code, as well as the access to training on prevention and intervention strategies that are to be used with any disciplined response. Due to the lack of meetings, there has been little communication regarding either. Teachers work tirelessly to ensure that all students have the opportunities they need in order to fulfill their maximum potential, but they cannot do it alone. If the leaders of this district cut off communication or have it going in only one direction, you will not hear the voices of those of us who are closest to the students, parents, and the community, the teachers. We ask that the Save Committee, Alert Team, Health and Safety Committee meetings resume immediately. We also ask that four of the Board of Education members participate in an NTA Board of Education forum regarding safety in the district and the form regarding safety in the district in the next coming weeks. This will be an opportunity for the NTA members to speak directly to the district leaders about their concerns and to try to come up with the best way to work together to address any obstacles to student success and improve the outcomes for the children of Newburgh. Before I close, I would like to take a moment to address a different topic. In a recent article in Education Week, there is an account of the events in the Newburgh and North School District for the years directly preceding 2014. My recollection is very different from the version related in this article. The article suggests that prior to 2014, we had weak teachers teaching high-need students causing poor test scores. I would point out that today, majority of our teachers are the same teachers that were here prior to 2014, teaching in the same positions. What has changed since 2014 is that we have had an increase in state aid, allowing for the institution of more valuable programs and assistance to our educators. What we should all remember from prior to 2014 is the number of layoffs and reductions in programs this district, our teachers and students had to endure. What I remember from prior to 2014 was that our teachers took wage freezes, worked hard to implement a badly rolled-out Common Core curriculum, and yet through it all, continued to work tirelessly with parents and students to make sure that all of the children in Newburgh and North City School District were successful. As I close tonight, I ask that the voices of the members of the NTA once again are heard. Through collaboration, the district can again become proactive instead of reactive. We want to advocate for our students. That is what we do, because we truly believe our working conditions are their learning conditions. But we can't do it alone. No one fixes anything and everything alone. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call Ms. Jillian Cassie.
Good evening. My name is Jillian Cassie. I teach at NFA Maine. Tonight I am speaking as the Union Health and Safety representative for that building. While there are many ongoing security and safety concerns at NFA Maine, which are beyond the scope of the building leadership, tonight I will be focusing mainly on cafeterias. While I'm aware that some people would like to attribute our concerns to only the scanners, this is part of a multi-layered problem which I will address shortly. I've provided Mr. McCoy with a list of excerpts from principal delegate meetings and email correspondences which highlight the ongoing scanner problems. Here are a few highlights. 2013-14 in a nine-period day, December 2013, too many students in one cafeteria, period nine. In May of that year, the head delegate asked for an emergency phone number, which was lost and switched to voice-over IP. Following school year in a nine-period day, November, the head delegate asked again for an emergency number, requesting the district provide this. March and April of that same school year, period nine cafeteria duty scanners and overcrowding in the cafeterias. The following year, 15-16, September, still many problems with the cafeteria scanners. The software is not reflecting changes made on Infinite Campus. Ms. Cassie, that's why we don't use Infinite Campus for the cafeteria scanners. November of that year, with regard to technology, the principal said, "We are waiting. We are in need," and continue to echo that to anyone who will listen. June, the head delegate requests that scanners be up and running for the 16-17 school year. The following year, September, the disparity in technology. The new tech director mentioned cafeteria scanners not working, period nine overloaded. May, the head delegate asked that the scanners in the cafeterias be operational for the following school year. 17-18, September, scanners not working properly, no schedules, overcrowding in cafeterias. June, we asked that they be working the following year. This year, September, October, November, December, cafeteria scanners, no photos for freshmen, scanners not working properly. January, scanners still not working, pictures from NFA North coming up showing entry scans for all cafeterias, including North. Ms. Cassie asked the principal if he would sign a district-level health and safety report, and he agreed to do so. There are copies of that. The district-level support report was formatted on the 19th of January and went in on the 24th. Identifying the scanner failures as "an active hazard to the welfare of students and teachers alike, particularly in the event of an emergency." It's not just the scanners. The incident in the cafeteria could just as easily have happened in the hallway, a stairwell, a student bathroom, a faculty bathroom, unmonitored and potentially unnoticed by cameras or adults. Right now, it is entirely possible for a student to walk in the door of NFA Maine, skip every class of the day, and have no one ever know he or she was there. In fact, it's happening right now. It has been five years. Four principals, including a co-principal, an acting principal, and a substitute principal. Three or four technology directors, interims, coordinators, and/or liaisons who lost track. Two or three district-level security heads, two building security heads, two head delegates, and at least 35 principal and delegate reports and emails from various sources. As of today, we still have wrong schedules, lag time, a computer in one cafeteria not working at all for an entire day, some scanners not working all day, old schedules coming up, and merged schedules with students recorded as being in multiple classes. Understand it's not those scanners alone. It's the elimination of the eighth-period bus that leaves large numbers of additional students waiting in the cafeteria. It's the shortage of custodians that means we close down cafeterias, a shortage of security that leaves one monitor to cover four cafeteria doors and two scanners during passing time, refusal to keep security for an additional 15 minutes, which leaves us with 2,500 students exiting 350,000 square feet of building on 43 acres with four security monitors. The subs shortage leaves up to 50 classes a day uncovered with admin tethered to the auditorium to watch them. This is a symptom of a much larger problem, neglect and abandoned initiatives. We were promised a person to check on us. That hasn't happened, and it shouldn't take a volunteer Union Health and Safety person two years of persistence to get across for. I'm sorry, but this problem is not solved with the scanners because of an underlying systemic problem. Please, fix it. Fix the infrastructure. Fix the building.
Ms. Jennifer Postebiel?
Good evening. My name is Jen Postebiel, and I have been teaching English in the district for 22 years. Tonight I will be speaking in the capacity of head delegate for NFA Maine on the topic of inequity. When it comes to equity, we are one. NFA Maine is one, alone by itself and left to its own devices. We have the largest building, student population, and faculty in the district, yet we are invisible because we have been suffering from a lack of attention for five years. We currently have just under 2,500 students, though that number is subject to rise since all nine through 12 new entrants come to our building. I have given Mr. McCoy the current ratios as of this Friday for some of the services offered at the three high schools for you to view the disparities. But here is a quick summary. If NFA Maine were stamped at the same ratio as North and West respectively, Maine would have 15 to 22 administrators, eight social workers, three to 11 school psychologists, 12 to 22 guidance counselors, and 34 security guards. Can you imagine if the students at NFA Maine had this level of support? Please do not misconstrue my point. I value schools that offer smaller learning communities. Having been a teacher for the very successful Arts Academy for over a decade, I have heard numerous times that we can't compare buildings. However, the fact of the matter is that Maine is always compared to other buildings and expected to have the same level of success with one-third of the resources. Students' needs do not change based upon the building they attend. I have numerous students on my class load this year who are suffering from anxiety, panic attacks, and even suicidal thoughts. Are they any less deserving of services because of the building they attend? Additionally, the discrepancy in student enrollment, class size among the three buildings is wildly inequitable, making for larger class sizes at NFA Maine. If a student enrollment in a class at Maine falls below 15 students, that class is collapsed, but a similar class at North is allowed to run. Why this inequity? This is clearly denying students access to certain classes or the right to have equitable learning environments. For example, some incoming ninth-grade students at NFA Maine have been placed in non-lab science electives rather than Regent's lab science classes due to the shortage of seats available, thus compromising their ability to graduate in a timely fashion. In five years, with numerous building walkthroughs conducted by central administration to scrutinize teachers, they never thought it prudent to scrutinize the safety measures or lack thereof at the NFA Maine. Perhaps it's about priorities and choices. We have money for this, these, this, this, the floors in this building, and teacher recruitment missions to Puerto Rico yielding no prospects raises for themselves, numerous additional central administrative positions while the needs of the students and faculty of NFA Maine are ignored. None of that keeps us safe. We need more security guards, more school psychologists, more social workers to deal with the student trauma and a system whereby students can scan in and out of the building so that we can distinguish whether they are absent or hiding in the many nooks and crannies that exist in our building. Following the recent incident at NFA Maine, teachers do not feel safe, and if teachers are not safe, neither are the students. Mr. McCoy has a copy of some of our teachers' thoughts to share with you. I'll read a few of their concerns. There is no emergency phone line. There's only one phone in the cafeteria. If you're not near it, have you called for help? We need more security. Class sizes are large and not always safe. Why are dangerous students allowed back in school? What does it say when the day after horrific assault on a teacher, not one person from central administration found the time to visit NFA Maine to see if there was anything the faculty might need? In previous years when things went wrong, the superintendent came to us to give us a clear picture of what happened and asked us what we needed. The faculty has yet to be addressed by anyone other than our building administration about what happened to my colleague on February 8th. The citizens of NFA Maine are left pondering this blatant disregard. I recently read that you can't change what you are willing to tolerate. We can no longer accommodate or tolerate this level of disregard. Show us that we are one has meaning, and it's not just a slogan. Thank you.
Mr. William Walker?
Excuse me. It's a little difficult to follow through after hearing all those things. I'm changing the subject on top of it, so just bear with me. At our last board meeting, I think I'm quite concerned about the three levels of a certain group within our elementary schools. After looking at the presentations about our core focus, I hope that we focus on those, on that age group, on that specific group, and use all our resources, which I know we have. We have talented teachers. We have concerned parents. We can come together as a community and fix that problem, and it must be done. We are a diverse community that if we reach out to each other and if we can use all of our best standards and best practices, we can become a template for what education is supposed to be in this country. Thank you.
Mr. Walker, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you speaking as a board member or as a...
Oh, I'm sorry. I am definitely speaking as myself. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to address the board on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Al Carter. And two things. One, in reference to what your staff has just shared with you in reflection to what our proposal will be tonight. Hope as a resident and parent and home educator, I would like to ask you to carefully consider the priorities. How much more needs to be done to improve the safety of each ability, the emotional and social needs of the staff and students to feel they are cared for and safe versus this idea of a junior high school? I listened carefully to your proposal, and I'm not sure what benefits you're really looking to get out of it. What I would hope is that you go back and rethink the effects, maybe the effects that you may not be considering. I see you have a CTE program, which is serving student needs. We have the West School serving needs, and now a junior high. And I have to wonder about the unintended consequence of possibly filtering out students so that our buildings no longer are as diverse and reflective of the community we serve. And maybe we are ignoring what we're doing at the K through five programs and mismanaging, maybe misplacing resources so that students, by the time they get to middle school, are better capable of coping, both with their needs, their educational needs, as well as the staff coping with them. Possibly by refocusing, reviewing, adjusting what's going on with the pre-K, K through five, we may not need a junior high scenario. Instead, strengthen what we have in our buildings today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Manners. Retired from the school district about two years ago. And I had to bring up something that happened in October or November, we had the appointment of coaching changes. And this kind of affected me as well. For several years, I was involved with the Newburgh basketball program for a long time. And upon retirement, I stayed out of the program. When that happened, I was notified that I had my qualifications for all of the stuff. And when I contacted the athletic director and the board and conference, I had the superintendent, I followed through with our protocol table of courses that need to be done. Completed them. Hello? I completed courses, but unfortunately, at that time when I was told all this stuff, this was in the middle of season, so I lost the bulk of the season. What I kind of get at is that there was also a situation that before I could be involved back then, it had to be board-approved by board members to be back on in any position. Well, since I've been off of the program, and I keep an eye on what goes on in school politics here and there, sports is very big for me in Newburgh, and I will be involved with students and helping kids out. I still do that behind the scenes on the outside. But one of the things that I brought to my attention, that there are still one, maybe two or three volunteer coaches that have not been board-approved, and why are they still being allowed to coach? And when I had this conversation with the superintendent, he did inform me, he looked into what he gave, got back to me with the information, okay, that they were certified, but then I found out there was one key thing. It was based on a letter that, that they had to fill out packets to be a coach and had to be board-approved. Well, we found out that has not been board-approved, and there's still other coaches. That's something I wanted to bring up that needs to be addressed. As it was done to me, what's fair is fair. So I'm also speaking on other coaches that if they decide they want to get involved in being with the program, what the criteria is, what the packets are, and if it was approved, was this admitted that they were approved, and if they are available, I'd like to see them. What we need to see... What we need to see during the day, I'll make a call to the district. But this is something that was brought to my attention, and it needs to be addressed on top of everything else that you guys have going on. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board on non-agenda items? If not, we're going to continue with our board meeting. Thank you. We're going to move on to my question. First reading of policy number 5100, student attendance, and 5411, participation of student effort, extracurricular activities, and inter-scholastic athletics. Are there any questions or discussion? Mr. Shaw?
One question of the last board meeting, one of the items regarding credits, there was a compromise to add a component to have the summer school with one credit. I don't see that on the draft policy. Is that going to be included in the policy or is it not?
There wasn't a consensus of the committee for that.
So we took a consensus, and it was, this is a 2.1. Because we have three athletic committee members.
Good night.
You guys could put anything you want on the floor to recommend the change to what's up there on the floor.
So we can recommend tonight a change to the policy? Okay, so this is regarding the academic eligibility for participation in all extracurricular activities, inter-scholastic athletics. And the second bullet point, where it talks about 4.5 credits, this is the first page. At the high school? Yes, definitely. I would love to add that the 1.0 credits be offered and required for students to be taken at the summer school program so that we can have students participating in all of our activities that will be on track for graduation in their four years.
So, say that again for me.
I would like to add the 1.0 credits during the summer school program to be eligible to participate in extra credit.
So a student must take 1.0 credits during summer school?
If they only have 2. They have to get the 5 by the end of the academic year, which includes the summer school program. That's what was discussed.
So your recommendation is if a student has 4.5 credits or less, they must take 1.0 credits during the summer?
Well, they have to have five and a half total, and the only way to do that is to have, I'm not sure, I know we discussed that, I thought it was going to be included.
Well, and I thought our discussion, which I was at, you're trying to put in 5.5 credits for students to be eligible.
Yes.
That's what's your...
That was a compromise, that's...
But what we had decided was all of us weren't in favor of that.
That's correct.
Because number one, I believe that it eliminates a lot of our L students and a lot of our students with special needs who are never going to be able to have that, to be able to participate.
So the extra credit during the summer school is not going to be included?
At that committee meeting, there was two members, there was four committee members at the meeting. Two members wanted it to be 5.5, and the other two didn't. So it was presented as it's here, and there wasn't enough people at the committee to change it. So the board, if the board as a whole would like to change it, certainly allow it.
I thought that the committee consisted of the members that the president appointed, and only if there was not the three present, then the president could sit in as a member of the committee.
Mr. Shaw, can you comment on the president's ability to speak in meetings if there's less than five?
I'm recalling it correctly. The president observes but isn't a participant at the meetings.
In the board meetings?
To mine out of guess, but I have not reviewed this for this meeting or for this year.
I just want to throw a blunt caution out. We certainly have been running summer programs that have multiple options for a number of different kids. That's always contingent on funding. So I would just be very careful putting something in policy that references someone being mandated to do something because in any given year, we could cut from the programming if we don't get certain aid or projected revenues don't come in as anticipated. It's a priority with us because we're trying to provide more opportunities and have an expanded year for kids, but that's always contingent year to year on finances.
So I want to get back to, to, hold on a second. Who's got their hand up first? Mr. Howard, you first, and then Mr. Levinstein.
Yes, Madam President. So that conversation that centered around, it was a discussion to make it mandatory for students to have 5.5 credits to be eligible for extracurricular activities in the following year. That discussion was had, and what was discussed is that we felt that it was not fair because it was L students, as you said, and also exceptional learners. And this meeting happened right after we had the situation when we were reading the scores of the students in our district, and we said that the population that got the affect the most will be the Ls, exceptional learners, and students in boys of color. And we said we didn't think that was fair to put that in the policy. Now, if you want to bring it up here now for discussion, that's different, but we decided at that point that it wasn't fair to a large population of students in our district. That was the conversation.
Okay, so Mr. Levinstein, and then we're going to put that on the floor. Go ahead.
So I'm not on policy that, and so if, well, if it's 4.5, we don't need to do what he said, because it's rare to 4.5 here, but if you want to raise, if someone wanted to raise that to 5.5, then I believe he was looking for that opportunity there. So the question before the summer school, is do we want to have a 4.5 or 5.5?
Mr. Howard?
And then on top of that, we asked for further information from Mr. Ford, the central administration, to give us the number of students in those grade levels that had the 5.5 credits, and it was a large number of students that would not have been eligible or met that requirement. So we felt that that was unfair to mandate the 5.5, and it's the standard to 4.5. We want them to get the amount of credits as possible, but the conversation was around who this going to exclude?
Mr. Shaw?
So as a matter of process, the board president can vote even if we already had a forum, had a committee meeting to block a vote?
I'm not going to give a definitive answer here today. This issue was not raised to me for this meeting, so no answer.
Okay, so what we're going to do is put your question on the floor and have a consensus of the entire board whether it should be 4.5 or 4.5 plus one.
Well, I wouldn't even vote to send it to the board if I thought that that wasn't included. I was under the impression that we was, we talked about an agreement.
Can I put that on now, and we'll see if the board has a consensus to change it to virtually 5.5?
Sure.
Okay. Mrs. Santiago, what's your feeling?
May I ask, just procedurally, what are we doing? Do we have a motion or...
No, we don't have a consensus. We don't, we're not voting on this policy yet. I'm just trying to get a consensus whether the board wants to go forward with 4.5 or 5.5.
I think I'd like to make a motion to amend the policy as presented to the board today, if I can do that.
Yes, you can. Okay. So you need a motion, now I need a second.
Point of order, could you state what your motion's going to be?
Thank you.
To amend policy 5411, the paragraph we're talking about, the minimum, that specifies the minimum credits, to say that the all students must earn a minimum of 5.5 credits, and perhaps parenthetically, if that would be appropriate, to say which may include up to 1.0 credit acquired in summer school, to be eligible for participation, etc. If I could just say one, just a word tomorrow. The reason, the reason for the number of 5.5 is because in order to graduate, students need to accumulate 22 credits. So if a student is acquiring the number of credits that they'll need to for each of four years, that would be five and a half credits per year.
Anybody else, anybody else have questions or comments on the amendment on the floor? If not, roll call, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Johnston? Mr. Levinstein?
No.
Ms. Manayao?
No.
Ms. Prokop?
No.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Burton?
No.
That amendment fails.
So this is the first reading of these two policies. Yes, sir?
Do we have any additional comments?
Of course.
Okay, so on 5100, first, analysis process at the building level?
Can you go back? You can do the other one first. Do you have questions on the other one?
Yes.
Good, because it's up, it's just easier. Thank you.
On 5411, so actually, I don't have any problems, but I do have a comment on this.
Okay.
So I'm okay with this policy. I do have one concern. Through the infinite campus portal, students and parents cannot see what percentage the student is at in attendance, whether they would be able to participate in events. So coaches, advisors, principals have that percent figure available to them. So if a student is not in a club or on a team and wants to participate in something tomorrow, they cannot be sure where they stand. So I say if it's something we can get on the board for either the parents and the students, let's put the responsibility in their hands to know where they're at. They know on infinite campus, they're out of their thing, or they missed a class, or they're cutting. They don't know the defendant that is driving everything as we go forward. So I would just like to see that, if that's a possibility, to put on one day. I'll take you back with the team and see if that's possible.
Okay, so do you want to flip, does anyone else have any more comments on this 5411 policy? Now, Mr. Levinstein, would you like to talk about 5100?
5100, I just want to get this clear, because things have changed, these policies, and not everybody in every building or every coach or every advisor is so clear about where we're standing, because of the changes or the different versions of it. So in analysis process at the school level, so the building principal, and here's her administrator, there's a W, I'm sorry, page five, the top paragraph. Basically, it's saying, I want to be clear, is it saying that the principal will review and initiate action at the building level for what they feel are students that have excessive absences? And so that's what I was wondering, if that's what it means, are we leaving it up to the building level for that? And meaning they will say how they will respond to this, to the students, and when they will respond?
Mr. Ford?
So I recall a conversation at the policy committee meeting, and correctly come on, that we felt very strongly that there needed to be a regulation that went along with this particular policy that clearly articulated what each of these sections means. And we met already once with DeMarvo to talk about what a regulation would look like and kind of the organizational component of that, but that's as far as we got. But I do recall us having that conversation, that what does this mean as far as the role of the building principal to execute this particular policy, that particular component? The way I interpret it might be different from the way you interpret it, which is why we have to get that regulation included.
Are there any other comments on 5100, student attendance? Yes?
Just one small item of policy, 5100. The document that's generated, that we're looking at, the PDF document, it has an embedded title for a different policy. That gets corrected.
Any other comments or questions on either of these two policies? If not, we're going to move on. And because we've been here for like a million years already, skipping board committees, so we're done with those for today. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Elementary, Mrs. Felice.
Good evening, Madam President. This evening, CNI Elementary would like the board to consider items 6.1 through 6.4 as part of a consent agenda.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayao?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes our CNI elementary ratings.
Thank you, Mrs. Felice. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, secondary, Dr. Spindler.
Thank you, Madam President. I present to you the consent agenda of seven items, number 7.1 through 7.13, as a consent agenda.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items?
Yes.
What number, please?
7, 7.6 and 7.7.
7.6 and...
7.6 and 7.7.
Thank you. Any others? I'd like to entertain a motion on 7.1 through 7.13, minus six and seven. Questions or discussions on the large number of items? Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayao?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Let's go to item 7.6, please. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Ms. Burton?
So I've asked several times in terms of the process for generating contracts, agreements, and MOUs, and so, not that I... And so, not that I have anything personal against either of these consultants, but I do have a lot of questions that just aren't answered in the contract. So for 7.6, for $5,313, there's no supporting documentation in terms of the venue costs, the cost per person of the refreshments, the proposed days and hours of the sessions. I mean, it adds up to $483 per session. That's a lot of money for absolutely no supporting documentation in terms of what these costs are for. How the parents are expected to attend, what's the menu of these refreshments? Because that should determine the per-person cost for refreshments. So that, those are budget items that we have—I know I have no idea what this—the budgetary cost for a venue and these refreshments are, that add up to $5,313 for 11 sessions.
The information that I received from Ms. Peterson is that there will be 11 sessions, dating from elementary students on March 1st, March 15th, March 22nd, April 18th, May 10th, and June 21st. And for our teens, it will be on March 14th, March 21st, April 17th, May 9th, and June 20th. I, at this time, do not have a breakdown of the cost for the refreshments, it was just given to me as a total number.
Any other questions or comments on this, on 7.6? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd say I have a couple of questions about that item as well. Who is the, who are the district personnel who will be at these meetings and will be supervising them? I had a question, who is invited to these meetings? It sounds as if it's going to be students, is that correct? I got the impression it might be parents, so just a clarification on that point, too.
Mr. Mack, if you have more information, you can discuss it. I can pass this around. It's a parent cafe conversations and community flyer that was created for the event with our communication specialist in Cam Peterson, but if you have more information, feel free to share.
That's the issue that I have.
Will district, will district employees be present at these meetings?
Our Director of Family and Community Engagement will be present at the...
Any other questions or comments on 7.6?
Madam President, so...
Yes, Mr. Howard?
The cost per session includes the food and the rental of the space, is that what that includes? The venue and the refreshments? Okay.
Ms. Burton, you had another question?
Well, it's not a question, it's more of a statement. I just think that we should be careful in terms of now paying for rental space for community venues, because that could open up, you know, some other folk, you know, restaurants wanting to be paid for us to use their space. Again, it's nothing, you know, the venue itself is lovely, but it, you know, if it's about refreshments, we can take, you know, parents out to a restaurant and just pay for the food, because the venue is part of, you know, where they are. And so, you know, I just think it's a very lot of money. I would rather see money like that go into maybe field trips, college tours, something for the boys, I mean, they could really use that. If it's a matter of working with parents, we have, we have school space to be able to do that.
Yes, Mr. Levinstein?
So at the curriculum meeting, it was presented to the curriculum committee as a, basically as a parent-university workshop. And where, and that's the venue that they were holding it, because they tried different places and different things, and that's what is presented at, as a, as a parent-university program for kids and adults.
Any other questions, Mr. Howard?
Yes, Madam President, so if my recollection serves me correctly, I think the conversation was around having a location where eating to the parents, going to where the parents were going to locations in the community where it would be more accessible and parents were more apt to come and participate in these programs. I think that was a conversation that I had heard with Black Mill being one of the hubs in the community, where the parents actually show up and they go to, and they go to these locations. I believe the conversation was about, how do we get more parents to participate as opposed to coming to the school buildings? And I think that's what this was about. I could be wrong, but I think that was what was hinted around.
Any other questions or comments on 7.6? Yes, Ms. Burton?
Now, I fully unaware the concept, but what I am not in favor of is paying for venues, you know, $5,000 in a community. We have church venues, we have other restaurants, we have lovely places. I just don't know, because there's not a budget for this, how much money is going toward food, and how much money is going toward a venue. It's just a lot of money for, you know, 11 sessions, I think, personally.
Mr. Schreiner?
I took a quick look at the flyer, but it's not in Spanish. Is there a Spanish version of the flyer? And are we reaching out to the Hispanic community to do things like this?
Dr. Spinler?
Well, no.
Madam President, can I recommend that we table this, please?
Okay, I need a motion to table. Would you like— Ms. Prokop?
My only question about tabling it would be if it's the 11th they start, it's before our next—
March 1st.
Huh?
1st.
It's before our next board meeting.
So, Dr. Viti is recommending tabling. Does anybody want to make a motion to table? If not, we just continue with our regular motion. Okay? I need a second?
Second.
Roll call on tabling.
Ms. Manayel?
No.
Ms. Prokop?
No.
Mr. Schreiner? Ms. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
No.
That motion to table fails.
Okay, so we have, we have the motion on the floor, regular motion. Any more questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Santiago?
Actually, I agree with Ms. Burton, in the sense that there's not enough information on there. And clearly ask that in the future, please, you know, try and include as much information so that we can make decisions and not ask 50 questions while we're here, that's one. Two, to the point of being able to add refreshments, I think there are a lot of places. You kind of also have to, in order for, in order for a place to commit the space, they have, you have to kind of commit X number of people going. So it's not just paying the venue fee. Yes, we can all go to his house and, you know, spend $5 on a cup of coffee, you know, and something small, whatever, less than $400. But I'm sure that they're opening their place and they're committing to be, to hosting the location, so I just want to bring that up. Thank you.
Anybody else, before we do a roll call? Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
What is the roll call on?
This is on 7.6.
7.6.
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston? Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to item 7.7. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Ms. Burton?
So again, my question is, it's just not any supporting information. The consultant contract, it says nothing about what the service is. It doesn't say anything about the duration of the sessions, when the service is being performed, where, how many. I was confused in terms of how this, it says something around being connected to P-Tech, global to local plan, and yet the funds are coming out of 21st Century Grant, so it was just very confusing. I just don't know what it is and what's the purpose of it.
Okay, thank you for your questions. Long Carlos Spanero is a performer and artist who last year volunteered his time to work with our P-Tech students when we launched our TEDx Conversations. It was a success, and P-Tech asked for him to come back. He is going to attend weekly classroom support for over an hour, as well as weekly lesson plan development support, attendance within program development and planning meetings weekly. His compensation will be the total of $3,600 for a total of 18 sessions, I believe it's about $200 a session. Long Carlos Spanero is a performing artist, a professional development coach, he's a certified yoga teacher and educator, and he's spent more than 15 years researching and developing workshops. He would like to take this yoga, self-cultivation, creative expression, mindfulness arts, and collaborate with the English teacher at P-Tech to infuse that within the English curriculum, and then offer those presentational skills to the students.
Any other questions or comments on 7.7? Ms. Burton?
Yes, I mean, I know Long Carlos, so I do know his vitae, and again, that's not my concern. My concern more is the fact that these contracts are being submitted with no supporting information. And so, I don't know if that is a policy issue, I don't know why some contracts come with supporting documentation and some don't. That's really my concern, is that what is the procedure? What constitutes when one of these contracts come before us? What should be included with it so that we can make an informed decision?
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Ms. Manayel and I will discuss that this week.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call on 7.7, please.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
That concludes my item. That concludes my item of the evening. Thank you, Dr. Spinler. We're gonna move on to our Assistant Superintendent of Exceptional Learners, Mr. Bear.
Good evening, Madam President. I have one item for this evening. It's 8.1, recommendations from the CSC and CPS each of these.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Thank you, that was my name, Mr. Sebel.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. We're gonna move on to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Mr. Kern.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance would like to offer for consent agenda tonight, items 9.1 through 9.13.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Yes, Mr. Levinstein?
9.4, please.
Any others to separate out? I'd like to entertain a motion on all but 9.4.
So moved.
Questions or discussion on those items? Yes, Mr. Johnston?
I have a question on 9.8. It's the disposition of some obsolete computer equipment. I'm just wondering whether the district has a relationship with some site that auctions off this material, because I recognize some of it is being not, some of it. I'm just curious if it's gonna end up auctioned off somewhere, closed out.
We find the best value that we can get. Most of the computer equipment is low-passed at prime, and we go through the due diligence of making sure that the information that is on it is right point.
Is there a site that we maintain some relationship with? I know in the past, I thought there was some website that from time to time had obsolete equipment from the district, but I'm not sure if there is it now.
Yeah, there are several local vendors that we use for this.
Are there any other— go ahead, Mr. Schreiner?
On 9.11, I just want to say I'm very happy that we're gonna be getting this scholarship program. Basically, this program is to have students, when they come into the buildings, they'll scan in, and they come to the classroom, they'll scan in, scan out, but we need to make sure that the scanners are in the libraries. I would even rather have also at the bathroom locations, any kind of major guidance counselor's nurse's office, so that everywhere the kids go, we need to know that they're in the right place at the right time. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on these items? Roll call on everything but 9.4.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Let's move to item 9.4. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Mr. Levinstein?
So, I'm not against the firm or the amount of this resolution. I do not support the practice that's in this resolution. It is my understanding that a property owner in the district can grieve their assessed value, the assessed value of their property. I do not think it's the school, the school district should be involved in this process. We are in the education business, and assisting in property value assessment is not in our light.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call on 9.4, please.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
No.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes the items for finance for the season.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. We're gonna move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, Madam President. On the human resources agenda, I have items 10.1 to 10.8 for your consideration on tonight.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, 10.1, 10.6, 10.7.
10.1, 10.6, 10.7. Okay, so...
One other question?
Yes, sorry, I kind of lost it.
10.4, please.
10.4. Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion for 10.2, 3, 5, and 8. Now, motion, please. Questions or discussion on those items? Roll call on those items, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Let's move to item 10.1. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Ms. Prokop, item 1.
F7?
What's your question? You want to remove, would you like to state this?
Yes, Madam President. For under 10.1, item F7, I'd like to table that.
So you want to take out F7?
Yes.
So we need a motion to amend, please. Roll call to amend?
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Manayel?
Yes.
Ms. Prokop?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.